If I call to order, I'd like to verify the trustees who are online. All trustees are present here except trustee Ohan Chanara. Are you there? Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, are you online? So Vice Chair Agnew is not online as yet. Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Powell. Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on our board's YouTube channel. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. Also, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. This is one meeting in the year which I and all the trustees really look forward to. I want to extend a very warm welcome to all our students, parents, guardians, and guests who are here in the boardroom, and to those who are watching online too. We start off our meeting with item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, the Our Father, National Anthem. I will now ask our staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today...
Is rich in the history and modern traditions...
Of many First Nations in the Métis...
From the lands of the Anishinaabe...
To the Atawandaran...
The Haudenosaunee...
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly...
Are steeped in Indigenous history...
As we gather today...
On these treaty lands...
Our Catholic social teachings...
Call us in solidarity...
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters...
It's an honor and...
A correction.
Lands!
Waters...
Plants...
Animals...
And ancestors...
That walked before us...
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist...
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
Knowledge and thank...
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation...
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Chair, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father, and the National Anthem?
If everyone could please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Jesus, the light of the world, as we celebrate your birth, may we begin to see the world in the light of the understanding that you give us. As you choose the lowly, the outcast, and the poor to receive the greatest news the world has ever known, so may we worship the meekness of heart. May we also remember our brothers and sisters who are less fortunate than ourselves in this season of giving. If we all say this in the prayer that you taught us, "Our Father, who rewards in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy canings come on, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we give this life our daily lives. As Jesus Christ Christ, our Father, and Jesus Christ, we do not preach, but deliver us from evil." Father, Son, and Spirit.
Thank you, trustee Chair. Item 1.2, motions arising from in-camera. There were no motions arising from the in-camera session that will require a vote in the public session. Our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, additions, or corrections to the agenda, or do trustees want any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for removal, please. Trustee Powell moves. Looking for a secondar. Trustee Saunders. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chair?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
We have seven in favor. None opposed, no extension. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. We must now move on to the two item number three, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Number four. 4.1, Keeping Christ in Christmas. Director Klein, please introduce our presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I would echo even more loudly than you the fact that this is probably one of my most favorite evenings of the year. Favorite board meeting, for on this night, we have the chance to have families, and more importantly, students here, who have, through their creativity, and through their faith, and through their dedication and love, and maybe leaning on their parents a bit too. They've shown their, again, their artistic capabilities. And the prayer that we heard earlier was talking about being a light to the world. And these students are light to the world, and our schools are light to the world. And that does mean that when it comes to this year, or this season that we're heading toward of Christmas, we want to make sure that we focus that on our brother and our Savior, Jesus. I'm going to turn this over to our manager of Strategic Communications, Ms. Swenden, right now, and she will push this a little further along, give a bit of an introduction, and then we'll get into the real fun part.
Thank you, Director Klein, and good evening, Mr. Chair, trustees, staff, students, parents, and guests. We are, my name is Andrea Swenden. I should tell you, for those of you who don't know who I am, and with me tonight is Juliana Glagoric, who's at the desk there. Rob DeFranco is kind of hiding right now, but he'll be furiously taking photos of all of you once it begins. And Richika Serena is somewhere as well. I don't see her, but she's part of our team as well. Oh, there she is. There's Richika. So together, we make up the Strategic Communications Team at the board here, and we're really excited. This is also our favorite night of the year, period. Never mind board meeting, favorite night. We're excited to welcome all the student finalists from our 11th Annual Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. You know, the parent, the students that are here, and there are 16, I believe, here tonight, and their families. They're all justifiably proud, as they should be, to be here. They've made it from, we've shortlisted, I think there were over almost 300 submissions, just so you know, and it came down to 16, so it's a big deal that you're here. And congratulations already. Whatever happens tonight, at the end, you're all winners, as far as I'm concerned, so congratulations. So just to give you a bit of background, we started this contest in 2013, and at the time, it was simply to, our goal was to get a piece of artwork that we could use for the Director of Education's Christmas card at the time. At the same time, we had launched our social media platforms on Facebook, and at the time, what was no longer called Twitter, but at the time was Twitter. And so we also tried to, we used the contest to actually gain traction on our social media platforms. So over the years, we've adjusted elements. You'll see there, it's kind of evolved over the years based on feedback, and we continue to be in awe every year at not only the quantity, but the quality of submissions that come in. So, next slide, please. I don't know, Juliana, do you have control, or is it Elizabeth? No, thanks, Elizabeth. So since 2013, we have received over 4,280 student submissions and over 57,600 online votes. I do want to say before, at the outset, that we would not have been able to run this contest had it not been for the partnership and support of our Halton OACTA Associations. And OACTA, for those of you who don't know, is the association that represents our teachers. So we have with us tonight Tara Hambley and Vanessa Sleet. If you just want to give away, you'll be hearing from them later on, but just to, we do acknowledge because they do provide the, they graciously support the final prizes. And I know that's just part of the reason why our students submit, but I think that's a big part of it, so we thank them for their support and partnership every year. So one more thing quickly before we get into why you're all here. I just wanted to mention that, speak to our Christmas card fundraiser. You've probably seen us promoting it. It is linked to the Keeping Christ in Christmas. We, next slide, please. Before, yeah, in 2018, we decided to take this contest kind of to the next level, and we started creating cards from the previous year's artwork and selling them in bundles for a donation. And all the proceeds from the donations raised go to support families in Halton, in our communities, through the St. Vincent de Paul Society. So I think you may have to press Enter again, because, yes. So since 2018, we have raised over $30,000 in funds. And this year's contest is still, oh, not contest, this year's Christmas card, they're still available. So if you haven't purchased your Christmas cards, just a small plug, and you need Christmas cards, please visit our website. It's right on the front page. It is for a good cause, and they're beautiful cards. And just to mention that this year, the artwork that we've received this year will be used towards the cards that we create next year. So now, with that said, I will ask Juliana to walk us through the details of the Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest.
This year, the call for submissions went out on November 3rd, and all entries were due by November 23rd. We offered four categories: traditional artwork, original song, short video, and short story or poem. Just this year alone, we received over 280 student submissions. So on November 27th, a judging panel met to review all of our submissions. The judging panel consisted of our Director of Education, John Klein, our Chair of the Board, Marvin Duarte, our Vice Chair of the Board, Brenda Agnew, the President of the Halton OACTA Elementary Teachers Association, Tara Hambley, the President of the Halton OACTA Secondary Teachers Association, Vanessa Sleet, Vice President of the Halton OACTA Secondary Teachers Association, Michelle Tixera, Superintendent of Education, Special Education Services, Cassandra Jack Caldera, our Religious Education Curriculum Consultant Patricia Delben, our Assistant Chaplaincy Leader, Gillian Federico, and Senior Manager of Human Rights and Equity, Sita Jayaraman. Student submissions were reviewed separately, and the judging panel didn't receive any personal information about contestants, or any information that would influence the selection process. The judges reviewed all of the entries and narrowed down the submissions to 16 entries, so four K-3 submissions, four grades 4-6 submissions, four grades 7-8 submissions, and four secondary submissions. After the judging panel narrowed down the finalists, the 16 finalists entries were showcased on our website, and the online voting process began, allowing students, parents, staff, and members of our community to take the, to make the final decision on the winner of the top prizes for our elementary and secondary divisions. The voting process took place between November 28th and December 3rd. So this year alone, we had an outstanding number of participants in the online voting process with over 6,200 online votes. Now it's time to meet the finalists. So we'll now go through each of the final submissions and let you meet the students who created them. All students joining us this evening will receive a gift for their outstanding accomplishment in making it to the finalist stage. Tonight, we'll announce the recipients of the four top prizes. Student finalists, once we have either showcased your submission, or you have performed, please come up to the front to receive your certificate.
And if I may ask the Chair of the Board and the Director to please come to the front as well, so you can hand out the certificates, that would be great.
First up, in our kindergarten-to-grade-three group, we have a video skit created by Giselle Jubin, a grade-three student from Sacred Heart of Jesus Catholic Elementary School. We'll play her video for you all now.
Hi, Mary. You're going to have a baby. I have to name him Jesus. I am the Lord's servant. Thank you for this blessing. You also need to let Joseph know. Okay? Hey, Joseph, your wife is going to have a baby. Name him Jesus. He's the son of God. Have what? Hey, Joseph, have you heard what the angels said? Yeah, he made no sense, but I'll still obey him. Many months later... My belly got really big. We have to find shelter soon. Mary, come, hurry. Yes, Joseph, I'm trying. Joseph, I can't walk anymore. Can we please have some shelter for a few days? Mary, 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 come! I found a spot for us in major. Mary, come! Hi, friend. Christmas is not only about Christmas trees, presents, Santa Claus, El Fonsell, and parties, but Christmas is also about baby Jesus. And Jesus is now born for us. Let us keep Christ in Christmas. Thank you.
Congratulations, Giselle. Please come up to the front to receive your certificate.
Hi, Mary.
So next, in our kindergarten-to-grade-three group, we have a nativity scene diorama created by Brody Benavides from St. Timothy Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Brody, and you can come up to get your certificate. So next up, we have artwork submitted by Gemma Leonarduzzi, a grade-three student from Canadian Martyrs Catholic Elementary School. Congratulations, Gemma. Also, in our elementary group, we have an illustration accompanied by musical composition by Lillian Jackson Martin from Guardian Angels Catholic Elementary School. We'll play their video for you now. Congratulations, Lillian Jackson.
So now, we are moving on to grades 4 to 6. And we're going to start with a painted rocks nativity scene created by Peter Alcory, a grade-five student from Holy Rosary Catholic Elementary School in Milton. It's also, we have it sitting on our desk at the U there. If you have an opportunity to have a closer look, it's quite beautiful. Congratulations, Peter. Next, we have a short story video submitted by Chloe Breha, a grade-four student, also from Holy Rosary Catholic Elementary School in Milton. And we'd like to invite Chloe up to the microphone now to share her story with us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chloe Archangel Breha. I go to Holy Rosary Catholic Elementary School in Milton. My teacher is Ms. Guston. I'm in grade four, and I'm nine years old. Tonight, I'll read you my short story, Keeping Christ in Christmas. Thank you. For as long as I can remember, I always loved Christmas, the beautiful lights, the Christmas trees, and the smell of Christmas baking in the air. But I truly love the meaning of Christmas, the story of Mary, Joseph, and the birth of Jesus Christ. The true meaning of Christmas seems less important today, as people buy more gifts, stores selling more items without meaning, gifts, stores selling more items without meaning, and Christmas movies coming up for the holiday season, with stories that have nothing to do with the true meaning of Christmas. Houses decorated with different characters like Santa Claus, Snowman, and even Minions of Elsa. But I don't see any nativity scenes. I also love the Santa Claus parade here in Milton. My family would dress up warm and have hot chocolate with marshmallows, and wait for all the floats and people to go by. The older I got, the more I noticed that the meaning of Christmas was missing in the parades. They would play Christmas music with bands, but the songs were more like Jingle Bells and other Christmas tunes. Most of the floats were just stores or companies promoting themselves by adding Christmas trees or snow to their floats, seeing characters like Mickey Mouse, the Grinch, and Teddy Bears handing out candy canes and store coupons. The biggest float that kids would get excited to see was the Santa Claus float at the end of the parade. This made me wonder why we wouldn't have a nativity scene showing the birth of Christ. The only place that we would see a nativity scene would be in front of a church. Why? Why are we afraid to talk about the true meaning of this amazing holiday? Is it harder to put up a nativity scene than it is an inflatable snow globe that shows characters inside? This is the happiest time of the year, when Christ was born. We should not change it. It's nice to see beautiful lights that make people happy, but for me, I'd love to see people being filled with happiness and reflect on the importance and try to be more like Jesus. During Sunday Masses all year, I see so many empty spaces, but during this special Christmas Eve Mass, there's only standing room available. And suddenly, you see people that you've never seen before. It makes me wonder, where are all these people during the year? If we could act more like Jesus in our everyday lives and actions with other people, even for a short time during Christmas, then maybe that will help the spirit of Christmas. And the Holy Spirit will become more important in our everyday lives. Everyone, please, let's keep wishing people a Merry Christmas, and remember, it's less of a holiday and more of a birthday. At birthday parties, we focus on the person having the birthday and wish them happiness and fun, making sure the center of attention is really on the birthday boy or girl. For me, Jesus is the one having his birthday on Christmas. So please, everyone, let's celebrate the happiest birthday on earth. Happy birthday, Jesus, and a very Merry Christmas.
Great. So next, we have a mountain... So next, we have a mountainside nativity scene created by Marco Duerer, a grade six student from Ascension Catholic Elementary School in Burlington. That nativity scene is also right there, front and center on the table. If you have a chance, it's really, really impressive. And congratulations, Marco. And last, but certainly not least, in the four to six category, we have an original song by Audrey Rosales, a grade four student from St. John Catholic Elementary School in Burlington. We'd like to invite Audrey up to the microphone to perform her song for us this evening.
So now we're moving on to the grade seven to eight group. I hear myself. We have an original song by Carmen Killens, a grade seven student from St. Mark Catholic Elementary School. And we would like to invite her up to the microphone to perform her song for us.
Hello. I will be singing my original song called Our Messiah. Here I go.
Glory to the highest, hallelujah. Jesus, our Savior, our Messiah. Let every heart and voice proclaim the love that in a manger came. Wise journey from afar, guided by the heavenly star. Gifts of gold, frankincense and myrrh, honoring Christ our Savior. Glory to the highest, hallelujah. Jesus, our Savior, our Messiah. Let every heart and voice proclaim the love that in a manger came, born to bring us peace and light over all this holy night. Redeemed by Him, hearts will rest. Rotten and crushed, hearts so dark. Glory to the highest, hallelujah. Jesus, our Savior, our Messiah. Let every heart and voice proclaim the love that in a manger came. O starry night, the angels sing. The claim joy, the new king. In Bethlehem, a humble birth. God's great gift to all.
Congratulations, Carmen. Next up, we have a video illustration submission from Selena Elsife, a grade seven student from Guardian Angels Catholic Elementary School. We'll play Selena's video for you all now. Selena was unable to attend tonight's meeting, but please join me in congratulating her anyways. We also have a Christmas comic book written and illustrated by Peace Olive, a grade seven student from St. Dominic Catholic Elementary School in Oakville. Congratulations, Peace. And now we have an illustration video created by Sienna McAllik, a grade eight student from St. John Paul II Catholic Elementary School in Oakville. We'll play Sienna's video for you now.
A pandemic. Dealing with a mental health crisis, just to name a few. Mary and Joseph had their fair share of struggles too, traveling on that donkey, trying to find a place to give birth, and the uncertainty of God's plan for their growing family. Yet, their perseverance, faith, and trust in God even during this difficult time is a reminder that God is always with us. During Christmas time, we sometimes get caught up in the sales and commercialism of it all. But Christmas must be a reminder of that strength, that hope within us all, the strength God gives us each and every day to push through. He unites us even during the most difficult times in our lives. We need to stop, take a deep breath, and be reminded of the light He shines on us each and every day. The Christmas festivities, lights, decorations, gifts, and cheer are symbols of God's everlasting presence and love within us all, and the love we have for each other. As we welcome hope, love, joy, and peace into our lives, we welcome Jesus into our hearts. Jesus, a blessing and the best gift of all, given to the world on the very first Christmas, is the true spirit of Christmas. And we can keep the Holy Spirit alive by keeping Christ in Christmas.
Thank you, Sienna, and congratulations.
So now we're going to move on to the final category, grades nine to 12. And we will begin with a nativity scene made out of gingerbread that was created by Isabella Bennich, a grade 11 student from St. Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School in Milton. I just want to say, when we saw the submission come in, it came in digitally. We kept hoping it would come in, in like, I can't say hard copy, but we kept hoping for the real thing. But it's probably a good thing it didn't come in because we wouldn't be here right now. But congratulations and thank you, Isabella. Next, we have a drawing submission by Erica Gorenco, a grade 11 student from Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School in Burlington. Congratulations, Erica. And now we have a snow globe nativity scene painting created by Megan Okomono, a grade 11 student, also from Corpus Christi Catholic Secondary School in Burlington. Congratulations, Megan. And last, but certainly not least, we have a painting by Vivian Pereira, grade 10 student at St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Secondary School in Oakville. Congratulations, Vivian.
Wow, that was something. I shall now open up the floor to trustees, and I'm sure trustees...
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry. We're not finished yet. We just have to announce the finalists.
Oh yeah, sorry.
And yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I misunderstood you. I thought you meant, are you done? You're done.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Ms. Lynn, go ahead.
Thank you to all of our talented student finalists. I'm sure you can see why their entries were selected. Now, before we announce the winners, I would like to invite the president of the Halton Ewecta Elementary Teachers Association, Tara Hambley, and the president of the Halton Ewecta Secondary Teachers Association, Vanessa Sleet, to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. We want to congratulate every single one of the finalists here tonight, because you've made it so far. There were so many wonderful submissions this year. So each and every one of you should be so proud of yourselves for the wonderful work you do. So congratulations to all of you. We want to ask you to please continue to share your talents with us, because all of you have such wonderful gifts from God that you've been sharing with us here today. So continue to share that with us, because all of you have truly shown us what it means to keep Christ in Christmas. So congratulations.
You know what? I got a big loud voice. Oh, it is streaming? It is streaming. Okay, all right. I still have a big loud voice. I want to say, and I think I can speak for Tara on this one, this is honestly one of the best parts of our job. It really is. I love when the submissions come in. I love this board meeting. It really is the best board meeting of the whole year, by the way. Okay? I love this board meeting. What I love most, though, is seeing the students with their families. And when you're a teacher, one of the things that gives you so much joy is when you see your students embrace their God-given talents and then go out into the world and use them for good. And I know that this Advent is a time of waiting, and I want to tell all of you that you have inspired me, you have inspired every adult, I think, in this room, and I have so much hope for such a bright future for all of you ahead. Congratulations. Your teachers are so proud of you. On behalf of Halton Elementary and Halton Secondary Teachers, we are so proud of you. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Tara and Vanessa, and now it's time to announce the winners.
This is the best part.
So the winner for the kindergarten to grade three is Brody Benavides from St. Timothy's. And the winner from grade four to six is Marco Derrera from Ascension.
Okay. And the winner for the grade seven, eight division is Sienna McCalek from St. Paul, John Paul II Catholic Elementary School. Oh, that's wonderful. That's so nice of you. Are you sure? That's so amazing. Do you see, like, so much hope for the world. God bless you. Thank you. I'm gonna cry. Jeez. Okay. Finally, for the grade nine to 12 division, I'd like to congratulate Isabella Bennich from St. Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School. That's a school I used to teach at. Congratulations.
We'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of the students who took part in our 11th Annual Keeping Christ in Christmas Student Contest. Since its inception, the Keeping Christ in Christmas contest has continued to grow and flourish. But thanks to the Halton Ewecta Elementary and Secondary Associations for sponsoring this contest through the generous donations towards the top prizes awarded to our student winners. Congratulations once again to all of our student finalists. Each of you are incredibly talented. Continue to use your unique skills and abilities to accomplish great things. And thank you for helping us keep Christ in Christmas. And if we could get all the student finalists in the board office lobby, along with your families, we would like to take some group pictures and pictures with our Director of Education and Chair of the Board. And students can also pick up their submissions from the table in front of me.
Just wanted to add one note. I think the Chair wants to have an opportunity for trustees too.
Well, once again, trustees, this is an opportunity for us to say a few words to our guests, our students. So please put your hand up, and I will give you the opportunity. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and I'm really sad. I'm sorry I can't physically be there in person. But, you know, again, everyone said it, but second term, watching the parents and the guardians and the children and making their submissions in over 300. What a great participation. We are so very proud of you, and one of the reasons why I'm a trustee. So continue to share your talents that were God-given and well-done to everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Trustee McGuire.
Thank you, and through your chair. I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank all of our finalists. I can't even fathom the amount of work that would have gone into making all of your submissions. I'm so proud of you. And on behalf of all the other student trustees and stuff, we are so in awe of all your talents and gifts and stuff, and we hope that we can continue to work to make sure that those gifts are continued to be represented. So you all should be really proud of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Trustee Powell.
I just wanted to echo what Trustee Ohan Chanara said and say thank you. This is amazing. You guys have so much talent. I can't even draw or write in cursive. So incredible talent that you have. And I just wanted to say thank you too for reminding all of us here what the true meaning of Christmas is. As I was racing here trying to like, think about what I need to get for Christmas, it was a really good reminder. So humbled. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Powell. Trustee Dipu.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I just want to echo like whatever everyone said. You guys were truly an amazing crowd. Thank you to everyone who shared your talents to keep Christ in Christmas. And please continue sharing your talents for the board and for the world, and continue to create a safe space and, um, safe space and loving environment always around you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Dipu. I see no other hands up, so I'll say the last word for myself. Congratulations once again to all our contest winners. I want to thank all our students who participated in this contest, not just, which is not about your artistic expressions only, but is about conveying the profound message of Christmas through your unique perspectives. Through the various projects we have received, we have seen your passion for Christ, and that radiates through your work in schools and through artwork. I want to take this opportunity to wish you and your families a blessed Advent season, surrounded by warmth and joy and friendship and love of our Savior, Jesus Christ. And once again, thank you to our staff. Thank you to Communications for putting this together. There's a lot of work that went behind the scenes. So thank you Director Klein. Thank you to Communications for putting this together. With this, I'd now like to invite all the trustees and students and their families to join us for a picture at the entrance. Ms. Lynn?
No, and you said we're gonna take a 10-minute recess, so I'll...
Yes, yes, I have to call 10 minutes recess. So I shall now call it 10 minutes recess, trustees.
...
Trustee Ohan Chanara? I'll come back.
No, I'm here.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Ohan Chanara. We have, we have voting on the consent agenda. How do you vote?
Oh, I didn't hear anything. I had no sound. I vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Agnew.
I'm the same. We had no sound, Mr. Chair. I vote in favor.
Okay, so we are voting on the consent agenda. Item six, item six, item six point one is action item. Six point one point one is approval of the minutes, minutes of November twenty first, twenty twenty three, regular board meeting. Trustee Agnew is in favor. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
So we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. We shall now move on to. Our next order of business is action items. Item number nine. We have two action items tonight, and I will once again review the rules for everyone's benefit. The trustee sponsoring the motion will have five minutes to present the motion and open discussion. We shall then start off with question period where trustees will have three minutes for, to ask questions from the presenters for clarification purposes only. There, there will be no debate during this time and no amendments. Then I shall now open up, I shall then open up debate time for three minutes, and then we shall take amendments, if any. The trust, the sponsoring trustee will then have three minutes to close the discussion and I will call the vote. Item nine point one, green energy funding. This is a notice of motion presented at a November twenty first board meeting, brought forward by Trustee Kelly on behalf of student trustee Chua. Trustee Kelly, can you please read the motion? Trustee Kelly?
First through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the HCDSB, oh, sorry. Just gonna wait for it to scroll. The following notice, motion was presented at the November twenty first, twenty twenty three, regular board meeting, whereas the HCDSB five-year energy conservation and demand management plan states that HCDSB is committed to energy conservation and the principles of sound energy management through its environmental stewardship policy. Whereas the HCDSB environmental stewardship policy states that the board will base the design and construction of new facilities and renovations on environmental principles, including sustainability and environmental impact. Whereas global warming, air and water pollution, smog, acid rain, deforestation and wildfires are just a few of the environmental challenges we face today here at a global scale. And whereas our students or as students of our environment, we are responsible for caring for and protecting our land. Whereas on July third, twenty eighteen, school board greenhouse gas reduction funding was rescinded, which detrimentally affected green energy initiatives across the province, leaving many boards with incomplete and unsatisfactory green energy projects within their schools. Whereas school boards are one of the largest public sectors consumer of energies, generating the equivalent of eighteen coal-fired power plants or fifteen million cars annually. Whereas the implementation of onsite self-generating renewable energy sources such as solar panels and wind turbines will substantially lower greenhouse gas emissions and reduce school board electricity costs and can make school boards eligible for long-term incentives rebates from green energy companies that can be reinvested into maintaining, improving and implementing more renewable energy initiatives and infrastructure. Whereas the initial implementation of green energy initiatives can be costly upfront initial capital investment for school boards, preventing and limiting Ontario school boards from implementing sustainable energy practices. Be it resolved that the Chair and the Director of Education of Halton Catholic District School Board send a letter to the Ministry of Education on the behalf of HCDSB with copies to local MPs and MPPs of all the school boards in Ontario, requesting that the Ministry of Education provide green energy funding for all the publicly funded school boards across Ontario in alignment with the current inflation rate by January sixteen, twenty twenty four, general board meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. The motion is, is in order, and I will place it on the table. May I have a second for this item? Trustee Kelly moves. Looking for a second, please?
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Powell. So now I shall open up, the presenter gets five minutes to present. Now, Trustee Kelly, Trustee Chua, both of you can present. So I will pass it on to you, and you can pass it on to Trustee Chua if required. Okay, but give me a second. I need to start my time. Okay, Trustee Kelly, your time starts now. You have five minutes.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I do want to take all of Trustee Chua's time, so I just want to mention that I'm bringing it up on their behalf, and I'll just give them my time for now. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Trustee Kelly. So today we're talking about a topic that often gets overlooked and swept under the rug. Our earth is a very unique biosphere that encompasses a vast story of life. And in recent discoveries, research, research has found that our planet is experiencing detrimental challenges because of the destructive practices of our human populations. From the extensive use of earth's resources to the amount of waste that is produced daily, we as a community have developed a tendency to neglect the importance of environmental sustainability on its practices, in continuing the state of the earth will make, have it deplete, and these changes become irreversible. Climate change is a result of negative impacts and long-term issues that affect our populations and ecosystems around the globe. As stewards of creations, we are responsible to replenish and restore the earth, ensuring its safety and security for future generations. As the halt, across the Halton Catholic School Board and school boards across the province, this motion urges to seek the crucial support of the Ministry of Education, reflecting our dedication to green energy initiatives that not only benefit our school but contribute to a healthier planet for all. And this motion urges to seek crucial support from the Ministry of Education, reflecting our dedication to green initiatives that will help HCDSB students and Ontario students across our province. We do have a statement from Serena Hardy, which is a grade eleven student senator. Unfortunately, she could, she could not be here today, but she is one of the leaders of our environmental stewardship, stewardship subcommittee, and I'll be reading her statement. As one of the co-leads of the HCDSB Student Senate Environmental Stewardship Subcommittee, I have led the opportunity to learn what students think about climate change and environmental sustainability. Last year, a subcommittee sent out a survey to all HCDSB high school students to gather their opinions across climate change. The survey received nearly five hundred responses of eager students, willing to share how climate change affects them. When asked, do you worry about climate change and other environmental issues? Seventy-eight percent of our students responded yes. And additionally asked, when does climate change affect your mental health? Thirty-seven percent of students responded yes. From this information, it cannot be denied that the HCDSB students care greatly about our climate change and the future protection of our planet. For, for these reasons, I wholeheartedly believe that requesting green energy funding for high schools within all of Ontario will help profoundly for HCDSB students and students across our province. Green energy within our schools is not only sustainable, but is also a learning experience. Students will have the opportunity to learn what the HCDSB is doing to combat climate change and can also be educated on the processes within their own schools. In doing so, I believe that students' worries around climate change will decrease. And in conclusion, it is our responsibility to look after our planet and ensure that it continues to flourish in the future. The green energy funding motion fulfills these responsibilities and our duties to be stewards of our earth.
Thank you, Trustee Chua. I shall now open up question time. We have three minutes per trustee, and trustees can put up your hands if you'd like to ask questions of Trustee Chua. So I have one trust, one hand up. Trustee Murphy, you have a hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if this should be addressed to Trustee Chua or perhaps Superintendent Merrick. But my question is, do we have any idea of the cost benefit of doing this? How significant would the savings be to justify the cost of implementing some of these initiatives on the motion versus what we're currently doing to improve efficiencies?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. All questions to be addressed to the chair, so the chair will decide. So, Trustee Chua, would you have any, any data for, for Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. So this motion is actually requesting that the Chair and the Director of our Board, or the Chair, sorry, writes a letter to the Minister of Education, so Minister Leche. It is not taking any money out of our pockets. It's asking for money to implement more sustainability practices and sustainability education for our students. There is really nothing financially that will impact the board. I can pass it off to Superintendent Merrick, asking like individual questions about how this will benefit and including sustainability practices, especially within infrastructure in our schools. But this is not coming out of our pocket independently.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. You would like Superintendent to clarify?
Sure, yes, I would. And I'd just like to say that it does come out of the pockets of tax holders, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Superintendent Merrick, are you, do you have an answer?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, you could go, I mean, from, there's a variety of paths you could go down with this. From resource conservation, which we focus on now, but obviously could use more funds to increase our our energy reductions in our schools, all the way to power generation onsite as well, which I know, I know some boards do. But frankly, in our spot where we are right now, the amount of money that we get for renewal funding is very limited because our buildings are in great shape. They take into consideration when funding for capital improvements on buildings, we get about five million dollars a year, and more of that goes into replacing our HVAC systems and our roofing systems in our buildings, and then maybe some, some building envelope things as well. It isn't a lot of money to go around to be spending on, on power generation onsite as well, so. But there was, like as Trustee Chua mentioned as well, there was a program back in the late twenty teens where there was money set aside, and there was, you know, a list of, you know, energy conservation or sustainability practices that were permitted for that money to be spent on. It was about a million dollars a year that went to boards. And it actually came out of the, it was, you know, early days of the carbon tax, and that came out of the funds collected for that, but then returned to school boards to invest in public assets. So there, there could be opportunity for those types of things as well. But I, I think if we, even if it was a nominal amount of money, I think we could find some really good uses for it in our schools to reduce our energy consumption and reduce our utility bills and promote our sustainability practices. We've done a lot with the little bit of, or little bit of funding that we've had over the past, you know, few decades. But we could obviously use more as well to invest in our buildings.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Murphy, your next question. You're done? Okay, so three minutes done. We shall now move on to Trustee Carabella. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Superintendent Ryan just answered that. I was going to ask, what specifically was the original greenhouse gas reduction funding and how are school boards using it? So I think you may well cut it. I'll think about another question. You can go on to the next person. Thank.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. The way it works is you have three minutes for questions, and I will come back for questions to you. I'll move on to debate next, okay? So up next is Trustee McGuire. Trustee McGuire, you have the floor. Your three minutes starts now.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I just want to say, Trustee.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. Um, I just want to say, um, Trustee Kelly and student Trustee Chua for putting this motion forward. And I really, um, thought it was interesting within your statement that you talked about the connection between student mental health and how climate change has progressed. Um, in another statement from our co-lead of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, Sophia Filbert, she mentions a stat that was also from, um, the same, uh, survey, um, released by the Environmental Stewardship Committee, um, that states that, um, students think about climate change at least six times a day, which I find that stat, um, quite baffling. So I was just wondering if, um, one of you would be able to further explain how this connection between mental health and, um, I guess can be, um, I guess we can, how can we promote student mental health and stuff through environmental action within our board? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Trustee Chua, would you have an answer? Would you like to answer?
Yes. So what I can't, sorry. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so what I can say about that is that there have been really big connections within our environment around us and the mental health um, of ourselves and how it impacts us. Um, I think we can all see now, like, it is getting darker and gloomier outside and seasonal depression is hitting. Uh, I am not a mental health expert, but I don't know if we have our mental health lead in this room. Um, but there have been a lot of research and a lot of, um, you know, say, like, um, statements from our students and statements from our stakeholders saying, yeah, their environment does affect their mental health and also their physical health. When we have more climate change and we have, um, you know, more impacts to our environment around us, whether it be the school environment, our home, um, nature in general, we aren't able to have the same quality of life like we would have, um, if we can, if we can increase, um, you know, the way that we are living.
Trustee McGuire, your next question.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is, uh, Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Thank you. Just wondering where the stat came from, that, uh, eighteen coal-fired power plants or fifteen million cars annually.
Uh, Trustee Chua, do you have information?
Yes, I can send you that article. When I submitted the notice of motion, there was a link of resources, um, attached to that. Uh, but it was an article from Toronto, the Toronto Star, um, during that period when that funding was rescinded by our government, um, on behalf of the Toronto Star and also statements from the Toronto District School Board.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Next question.
So when I found that, I found that it was a US stat from the EPA for school. Is that school boards in Ontario or school boards in North America?
Trustees ask the question to the Chair. Uh, Trustee Chua, you can answer the question.
School boards period, like North America.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy.
Through you, Mr. Chair. What, what place are we in in energy efficiency? We had a presentation last year. I think we were number two. Is that correct?
Correct. Uh, yes. Question.
And I thought we already had a presentation about using energy savings for other purposes. We just heard about energy savings, using it for, for this. Did we, did we have a presentation about using that money for other purposes already?
I'll pass this to Director Klein. Director Klein.
Did we have a presentation on the, I don't recall?
Superintendent Merrick or Superintendent Loft?
Uh, so, okay.
Yeah, Superintendent Loft, yeah.
We did use some of our savings because we are efficient, uh, Trustee Kennedy, we do use to help with other initiatives in the board. So because we are number two in the province.
Trustee Kennedy, next question.
Like, can you name a couple?
Um. Superintendent Loft?
Budgeting isn't that way, uh, Trustee Kennedy. It kind of goes down, so it helps in our deficits in other areas that we have in the board. So, for example, I could use like special education, for example, it helps with the special education deficit we have, so.
Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, so I did hear about it's not taking money out of the pockets of the board. It, you know, really would be money out of kind of taxpayers generally, which, you know, our stakeholders are taxpayers. So, you know, I think this is a great motion. It's, it's a good idea, but I just don't know if it's in our mandate as trustees. Um, nor I don't know if it's in our mandate to ask on behalf of all school boards. So is this something that we believe is in our mandate, Mr. Chair, as trustees to?
Trustee Kennedy, this is question time. So I'll, I'll get into debate time later and then you can debate about it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, do you feel this isn't a mandate, our mandate as trustees to request such, to initiate such a letter?
My answer, short answer is yes. The role of the trustees is, the role of the trustees is to, uh, to continuously make sure we have enough funding in our schools. We know that we are short of funding in all the areas, transportation, sick leave and all that stuff. Our role as trustees is governance. Since we know that we have a shortage of funding in all different areas, our role is to, is to appeal to the ministry to provide funding. And that's what this, the intent of this letter is.
But would it be for our school board to provide funding or is it on behalf of all school boards? Does it say here on behalf of all schools?
Correct, correct. So, Trustee Kennedy, this is how it works with the ministry funding. Uh, all school boards are treated equally. And so if we get funding, everybody gets funding equally. It helps everybody. Uh, the intent is to send this letter out to all the school boards. We could get the support from other school boards and that'll be a great thing if you do that. So it is our mandate, yes, to, to, to get funding for areas we are short funded for.
But we, we don't get it equally because our GSN is the lowest, right? So it's not equal funding, would you say?
Right. Trustee Kennedy, the intent of the letter is to ask for funding. The ministry will decide how to act on it. Okay.
So you think it's in our, our purview as trustees to send a letter on behalf of?
Absolutely. Trustees have done it in the past.
In the past few letters we sent on other issues, have we received any responses on other letters that we've sent?
Yes, we have, uh, we have received the responses from the ministry in the past and trustees have been, uh, copied on those things, on those responses in the past. So let's focus on this particular motion on the floor and the, uh, so let's focus on this one, Trustee Kennedy. So any more questions on this particular motion and we will, uh, move on to debate time. Any more questions, Trustee Kennedy? Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for putting this motion forward. I, I think we're getting in the weeds here, my personal opinion. Uh, this is a motion to send a letter to the ministry asking for funding. So again, silence is acceptance. So if we don't do anything or say anything, that means we accept it. That doesn't mean the ministry is going to give us anything. But I'm totally behind it. We need to ask for what we need on many, many topics. And yes, I believe it's in our governance and in our purview. So I will be supporting this motion 100%.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. I think you went into debate time already. So with that, I shall now formally open up the debate. Trustees, please put your hand down because somehow my, uh, hand up, hand down is not working over here. Please put your hand down. Uh, I shall now open up question, uh, debate time. So trustees, please put your hand up if you'd like to debate on this item. Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. Okay. Trustee, uh, Kelly, I see your hand is up. You're doing debate now.
Okay, perfect. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the statements that, uh, Trustee Ohan Chanara has mentioned. Like, I urge trustees to vote in favor of this motion ultimately. And it's a pretty straightforward and simple motion that just yours to send out a message to the Ministry of Education. As our student leaders here at the table have mentioned, and also at Student Senate, at the Ontario Student Trustees Association, as mentioned, um, climate change is definitely on the radars of these students and they see the impact that it has on our school boards and their education and throughout the province. And ultimately, uh, it urges us to be more sustainable and eco-friendly as future generations will continue to be increasingly impacted by climate change. So as stewards of the earth, and I think that we are called as Catholics, that we have the duty to ensure that we're taking care of God's creation. And I think that ultimately that this motion is not asking a lot and just demands for direct active change by urging our overall government to.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Trustee Kelly. Uh, Trustee Chua, I'll give you time to close. You're closing anyway, so I'll go to the next speaker. Uh, Trustee Deepu, you're the floor.
Yes, again, um, as Trustee Kelly said, I also urge all trustees to vote in favor for this motion as it, it's something that's really important to our students. As a student leader, as student leaders, we've seen it firsthand with our student senators and also with our own peers at school and our staff. And it's really important that students have this opportunity to take action. And, um, it's definitely a really good opportunity for us as students. Um, and I know I'm saying this a lot as students because we're the ones that are being impacted firsthand along with our staff. So I, it's really important that we have that chance to, um, direct this issue to the Ministry of Education and take action that way.
Thank you. Up next is, uh, Trustee Kennedy.
Yeah, just, just some questions with some of the numbers of the stats with, you know, fifteen coal-fired plants and fifteen million cars. So, you know, Ontario doesn't actually have any coal-fired plants. Um, you know, we are 51% nuclear, 25% hydro, 10% wind, 10%, or sorry, two and a half percent solar and only 10% natural gas. So Ontario actually is quite efficient from what we're seeing from, from, uh, from energy efficiency. Um, so just some of those stats are just, maybe we could stick a little closer to, to what we have here, um, in Ontario. Um, you know, I just have some questions about asking the ministry for funding, you know, do we have the credibility here to ask for more funding? We have a budget that wasn't balanced. Um, it's not compliant and we're about five million over budget. So when I ask about like who's going to pay for this, um, really it's the taxpayer. Um, the government's in a deficit too. Um, basically that means they're going to issue bonds at high interest rates. There's more inflationary spending, um, in already a high inflationary environment. So this is really going to be future taxes on the students that are, that are in, in class today to pay these, to pay these taxes down the road. Um, because the money's not just sitting there. The government doesn't have it either. And they're going to have to redirect from some other resources or, I mean, or issue bonds essentially to fund this. Um, what I thought might be a great idea was, um, to ask the government maybe to support some public-private partnerships um, to invest in more STEAM funding or STEAM classes. You know, we can teach students how to build and develop technologies to improve energy efficiency down the road. I think that would benefit our students as well and, and, and help the climate change crisis at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So I see no other trustees hand up, so I shall close debate time. Uh, I just have one comment here to all the trustees. If this motion passes, I will work at communications as per the motion, uh, and Director Klein and Trustee Chua to draft a letter which will be circulated to all trustees. Uh, if, uh, before the communication is sent out. So all trustees will understand what's happening in the background. So with that, I shall call the vote on the motion that you trust, that you see in front of you.
A point of order, I think, uh, student trustee Chua has.
Oh. Thank you for calling that out. Trustee Chua, you get three minutes to close. I'm so sorry.
No problem. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So by championing this motion, we uphold not only our commitment to environmental stewardship, but we also pave the way for sustainable and responsible future for the students that we serve here today. Together, we can take a bold step towards a greener and cleaner, more resilient educational landscape that reflects our dedication as a school board and the well-being of our students on this planet. So I urge the trustees here to vote in support in favor of this motion. Um, thank you all.
Thank you, Trustee Chua. And with that, I shall call the vote on the motion that you see on your screen. It has been moved by Trustee Kelly and seconded by Trustee Powell. Trustee, Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
There's no money opposed.
Thank you, Trustee, uh, Kennedy. Uh, Trustee Johann Chanara?
Yes, I'm in favor, absolutely.
Trustee Agnew?
I'm also in favor, um, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee, uh, Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Deepu?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
There's six in favor, two opposed, no abstention, motion carries. So as I mentioned, this letter will be written by communications and circulated Director Klein and myself and uh, all the trustees will see this letter before it goes. Thank you so much. We shall now move on to item 9.2, class size reporting. Uh, this is a notice of motion which was presented at the November 21st board meeting. Uh, by Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, can you please read the motion?
Item 9.2. The following notice of motion was presented, oh, sorry. Whereas by October 31st, in each school year, each board shall submit a report for the school year on class size in its elementary schools to the minister in a format acceptable to the minister. For Ontario regulation as listed there. Whereas by June 30th, in each school year, each board shall submit a report for the school year on class size in its secondary schools to the minister in a format acceptable to the minister. Be it resolved that the HCDSB will make public on its website by October 31st, in each school year, a report for the school year on class size in its elementary schools. The report shall be the same report that is provided to the minister. The HCDSB will make public on its website by June 30th, in each school year, a report for the school year on class size in its secondary schools. The report shall be the same report that is provided to the minister. Be it further resolved that the Director of Education shall review each class size report with the Board of Trustees during the board meeting that follows the date they are made public on the board website. For the 2023, 2024 school year, the Director of Education shall review the latest elementary class size report with the Board of Trustees during the board meeting on December 19th, 2023. Should any additional class size reports be submitted to the minister, the Director of Education shall provide the Board of Trustees the same reports. The report shall be provided to the Board of Trustees electronically within seven days of submission to the minister.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Uh, the motion is in order and I will now place it on the table. Uh, it's moved by Trustee Kennedy. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Saunders, seconds. So now I shall open up, uh, discussion. Trustee Kennedy, you have five minutes to open up discussions and your time starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this, the, the reason why I brought this motion forward is, you know, many of us have received comments from parents about cla, school class sizes, some of their concerns and from other stakeholders. And we, we did have a very informative discussion, um, um, from our superintendent in office about how that, how class sizes work. And that was very informative. This information that I'm requesting in this motion, um, was actually in the regulations of the ministry as of September 2020. And this information was not, I don't believe was on our website, even though it was regulated about three years ago. Uh, the other option, I believe, is you can have it at the board, posted outside the board. So I didn't see that information. So I, so, um, I thought this would be, allow us to be on, if we have this, um, presentation from our director and post, um, the information on our website, it would be accessible to everyone instead of having to, to come here to, to see it. Um, and this will really allow us to be on the same page, um, you know, staff and trustees with respect to class sizes. Um, this would really save us some time from trustees asking, um, superintendents and our director from having to answer back and forth on various class size questions. Um, so we can have an open discussion at one of our board meetings, maybe as part of our director's report. And we do discuss a lot of things now about many, many items. Um, this would really provide, uh, more transparency as well for those, um, watching the meeting and for our parents and stakeholders. So really it's about transparency. Um, you know, having our questions answered in a, in a, in a formal meeting. And I think it would really save a lot of time down the road. And if parents do or stakeholders ask us about class sizes, we can point them in the direction, um, to, to watch the board meeting that we had and also to, to direct them to the reports that we have on our website and show how we are in compliance with class sizes. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. I shall now open up the flow to trustees for question time. Question time is three minutes for questions. Uh, Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you. And to you, Chair, to, uh, Trustee Kennedy. So thank you for the motion, Trustee Kennedy. I, I have a question. Do you feel this motion blurs the line between governance and operational?
Trustee, uh, Kennedy?
I think this motion is important because, um, you know, class sizes do directly relate to the budget. It relates to teaching staff. And these are questions that I think all of us have been getting. And it would just make, I think, a lot easier for all of us if we just had this information. We had a discussion with our director to explain, you know, how the year is going. You know, it would make it, make it much easier to answer questions for our stakeholders. So I think it's, I think it would, it would be very important for us to have this information and to show that we're talking about it and, um, and you know, not have to have, you know, back and forth emails and it would just be much more efficient.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. I just, so your answer to that question would be no, you don't feel it blurs the line between governance and operational?
Uh, Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Ohan Chanara, ask you a question. Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I think really anything we do at policy is, is somewhat in operational, but anything that also really affects the budget and affects an issue that trustees are. and affects an issue that trustees are receiving quite often is something that it would be good to just have more clarity on. So that, that's, if that answers your question, trustee Johann Janada.
Trustee Johann Janada?
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johann Janada. Up next, we have trustee Powell. Trustee Powell, you're the floor, you have three minutes for questions.
Thank you. I just have a question, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. In regards to, how do you, how do I want to say this? How do you, how are we going to manage when you, when you just see numbers? You don't have the context. So you don't know if there are unique needs in that classroom. So if I, if I just look at base numbers and you see one class is sixteen and one class is higher, how do you, how do you prevent more questions when we're only giving numbers? Like, you have to see the big picture, right? That's just a tiny little piece. How do you pre, how do you kind of get more information when you're just seeing a number on a paper?
Thank you, trustee Powell, trustee Kennedy.
The ministry does further break it down on their website at the individual per-class level per school. So what I'm proposing is really the high level about how we are on an average, which, this is required. Like, this is required to be on our website, period. We haven't put on, I don't believe we've had it on our website. Maybe I can ask our chair, have we had this on our website for the past three years? I, I didn't, I couldn't find it.
Trustee Powell, your next question?
Yeah, I guess my follow-up would be, I, I did have parents emailing in the beginning, but once a class got sorted out, parents went, well, they followed the protocol first. They would go to their principal, and then they would come to either the superintendent or DS. Why would we skip all that and just post these numbers and invite more inquiries and confusion?
Trustee Kennedy?
So again, we're required to post the numbers, whether we, we like to or not. Really, it's just a matter of, the only addition here is having the director have it as part of his director's report to go through the numbers with the trustees at, at a board meeting like we do with many other items, many of which almost all are operational in the reports that we, we were going to be talking about operational items today. So it has to be posted, it hasn't been posted. And really, the only addition here is to, to share the information with trustees and to invite discussion. If there's really no discussion to be had, you know, director Klein would share the information. I guess we can move forward.
Thank you, trustee Powell.
Just think it's getting into operational.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, right? Uh, thank you. Up next, we have trustee Carabella, you're the floor, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since trustee Kennedy submitted this as a notice of motion on November twenty-first, since then, the information has now indeed been put on the website, correct?
I'm not sure, but I can ask director Klein. Director Klein?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Well, since trustee Kennedy put this notice of motion on, we've all been aware of it in the past two weeks. So now it is on the website, correct, that the information has been posted?
I believe it is, yeah.
Right.
Thank you, trustee.
Okay, thank you. So my follow-up question, well, I would be supporting this motion because it's part of the regulation, it's required, and now it's being put up.
Trustee Carabella, we're getting to debate.
Debate, okay, I'll save it for debate.
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Uh, up next, we have trustee Saunders, question time, three minutes.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. As, so, Mr. Kennedy, I believe this information is posted on most other boards as well. And in addition to ours, I think this is the standard information that's posted.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, I'll pass it to director Klein.
Yeah, I disagree. I don't know if it is on, on most other webs- websites for, for boards. I would also note that the timing of that, of that rule from the Ministry of Education was in twenty twenty, and I don't think we have to have a degree in history to know what that was like in schools in this province. And I can tell as a superintendent at the time that it was borderline traumatic as we were trying to keep schools and systems together, working fairly much twenty-four, seven. And I think there was a lot of money flowing in. There were a lot of students who were disappearing into the void of virtual school or not school at all, and sometimes yes, and sometimes hybrid. And I think the ministry wanted some of those numbers then, so not before that time, but at that time, to, to ensure that the, there was an accurate tracking of numbers. So I would point out the context of that time.
Thank you, director Klein. Trustee Saunders, your next question?
Yeah, sorry, I have to redirect that to trustee Kennedy. I think he, he has information regarding this, so I, I'd still, same question. Trustee Kennedy, it is information that is on most boards.
Thank you, trustee Saunders, your question is to the chair, the chair has directed it to the director. You've got an answer, we'll move on to the next question, please. Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Saunders. We now move on to, Vice Chair Agnew, you have your hand up, you're the floor, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So I'm sorry, it's difficult to hear, and I apologize. But I just, I'm not sure that I heard an answer to that question. So is that information routinely and consistently posted on other board websites, or is it not posted?
So, Vice Chair Agnew, are you seeking clarification from trustee Saunders or, or director Klein?
I, I would prefer, no disrespect at all to trustee Saunders, but I would like to hear from the director, who I know does liaise with other directors. So I, I guess my question would be for director Klein about whether or not this information is routinely and consistently posted to other board websites as well.
Director Klein?
I, I can't, obviously, I can't speak for chair, sorry, through you, chair. I can't speak for other directors on this. It certainly wasn't something that I'd done, or we'd done at the previous board. I think we were too busy trying to keep schools going. I've had staff take of some looks, look at different sites, and they haven't found any at this point. There are seventy-three boards in this province, so I'm not sure what the numbers are that would constitute most.
Thank you, director Klein, Vice Chair Agnew?
Uh, so just another follow-up question, Mr. Chair. So the other question that I have is, when we do post information, again, this is sort of on the same vein as trustee Powell had said, where, you know, when you post information often without context, so while there's a spirit of transparency, sometimes it does create more confusion and it can, you know, confuse parents on where to go, who to ask the questions. If this information was to be posted, you know, what, what would go alongside that? Would there still be, would there be information about why this was important? Would there be detail around this information? Would there be guidance on how people should read this information? Would there be guidance on who they would talk to if they had questions? So again, you know, just posting this information, what other additional information would go alongside this to make sure that this isn't just being posted for the sake of being posted? If, if the true spirit or the true intention is to make this easier for parents to get information relative to these class sizes?
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I will pass this to trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy, would you like to answer the question, or do you have an option not to answer the question?
No, sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, I just want to take a step back. So on, on the ministry site, under section Regulation one thirty-two dash twelve, class size, it's not an option not to post this information. This information shall be posted, period. Whether we like what's in there or like the way the ministry in a format acceptable to the minister is, is the format they want, it has to be posted. This is, really isn't the question. The, all I, I'll, I put a motion together because it hadn't been posted for three years. I mean, COVID, sure, maybe in, in September of twenty twenty, there were issues, and the last lockdown being January of twenty twenty-two. You know, we're almost two years from that date. Other boards may post this, they're not required to put on the website, but if they're not, if they don't put on the website, they can have copies, copies, copies available at the head office of the board and at the office of each school of the board, or posted to the website. Those are the two choices. We don't have a choice. That's what we're mandated to do. So really, all I'm asking for is, I just think it would be easier if it's on the website than having, if someone wants to see it, than having to come to the board. And, and from there, really, the only question is, be it further resolved that the director reviews that report with the Board of Trustees, maybe help explain it to touch, to trustees, we've, we've never really gone through this before. And then we'll understand it a little more if we get those questions about if someone asks us. And then regarding, you know, procedural, I believe that was, that was mentioned earlier, like, the, the current director's report today really contains all procedural items. I mean, I like hearing about faith development activities and the DELF program. And so if this is considered procedural by, by some trustees or esports, like we're hearing today, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, because we're going to be having a great discussion in a few minutes about procedural items at the board.
Thank, thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, your next question?
Thank you. So I did put my hand back up, is that okay, Mr. Chair, to ask another question?
You have three minutes.
Go back in the queue.
No, no, you have three minutes to ask questions, you have completed one and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so just another question with respect to the report itself. So again, the idea, and, and I know that we get a variety of different reports that do come to the board table on a variety of different topics for information purposes or for consideration or to help with our decision-making. So is the idea trustee Kennedy then with this report just informational? Is there an intention there to want to be able to review and make changes because that would be operational? So, you know, what is the intention behind asking for this report to come? Again, is it just purely so that we can take a look at these and ask questions, which we have had a chance to do in a trustee session previously, but to make it public at a board meeting is so that we can ask questions? Or is there an intention to want to try to make changes to the, the information itself? So just trying to understand the intention behind the report.
Trustee Kennedy?
Yep, thank you, trustee Agnew. No, there's no intention to change. It's really, it's really the report that the ministry requires. It's, it's the, they have a format of how they want it submitted, so not to change anything, really just to have it as an information item. And if we have any questions as trustees, we can ask our director to help explain it or our superintendent in charge of staffing and, and have our questions be heard, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I'm good, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Up next is trustee Carabella, you have your hand up, you have three minutes for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has the ministry, has the ministry recently rescinded this regulation? Thank you.
Director Klein?
To my knowledge, no, but I'm sure trustee Kennedy, if you're aware of that? No, nor have they pursued the, the, the board at all. There's been no calls from the ministry looking for this or admonishing us on not having that there. And it is there now, I believe.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, your next question?
Well, it would be that, no, it's more of the debate.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. I, trustee Saunders, you have your hand up, you had your question, you had your question time. No, you had your question time, and I shall now open up debate. So trustee Saunders, would you like to debate?
Yeah, sure, sure. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think from what.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I, I, I believe trustee.
Trustee Kennedy, please state your point of.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
State your point of order.
My point of order is, I believe trustee Carabella had two questions.
No. So when you say state of point of order, you've got to explain to me which bylaw is broken or which policy or which procedures violated. So.
I don't, I don't have the bylaw, but the, the instruction you gave earlier was that the trustees would have three minutes to ask questions consecutively?
Yes.
And I believe trustee Carabella asked questions, took a break, went to other trustees, and came back to trustee Carabella, that's the point.
Does not work that way, trustee Kennedy. I think I made it clear, we've been having motions in the past many, many, many times. Three minutes given to a trustee to ask all the questions you want, and then we move to three minutes of debate and we end discussion. You cannot do one minute of questions and bank the two minutes and come back later.
But that's what trustee Carabella did, didn't, did you say twice?
No, no.
Point of order.
Trustee Saunders, I'm attending to a point of order here. So all trustees will be absolutely silent till I make a decision on the point of order, okay? So trustee Kennedy, first of all, you need to point out to me the bylaw that was broken. You know what I'm saying? So the bylaw, bylaw ten point four, I'll help you here, okay? Bylaw ten point four, I think it's ten point four, if I'm not mistaken. Ten? Ten, ten point four, bylaw ten point four explains to you that it's three minutes of question time and three minutes of debate, five minutes to open up discussion, and three minutes to close discussion. So that's how it goes. So trustee Carabella had three minutes of question time, and that's how we have handled all action items in the past, and that's how it's to be handled. You can't have one minute of question time and bank two minutes and then come back to two minutes. No, it's not possible to track that, and that's the way it's designed and intentionally done that way. So trustee Kennedy, your point of order is.
Mr. Chair, she did ask questions, bank it, and come back and ask question again.
No, by my record, by my record, oh.
That, that's the point of order.
Okay, sorry, my, sorry, trustee Kennedy here. I made a mistake in writing down here, I agree with you, your point of order is valid. I reversed my decision there, but I wrote it down and I could not understand what I mean. So unfortunately, I will not be giving the banking time. It's three minutes of question time, three minutes of debate. I made a mistake there, I apologize for that.
So can you give?
So, no, we are going to move on to debate, three minutes of debate. Okay, I made a mistake in writing down, it's all manually done here. So trustees, I have a challenge in writing down sometimes and keeping track, so it's my mistake. So we are moving down to three minutes of debate. So trustee Saunders, you have three minutes of debate. Hold on one second, let me start.
No problem.
Okay, your time starts now.
Thank you very much. So it seems from the information that trustee Kennedy has presented that it's the law to do this, and if we don't follow the law, then I guess we're breaking the law. So I would think that, you know, there's really no debate. I mean, this is the requirement, this was done in the past, and this is information that's important. Even today, I received a call or an email from a, a parent asking about the class sizes. So it would be nice to be able to refer them to this information. And given that it's a requirement, I should be able to do that. So I will support this for that very reason, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Up next, trustee Carabella, you're the floor, three minutes for debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would be very supporting this motion because it is part of the regulation, it is required. And just because other boards haven't posted it, doesn't mean that we do that, right? We want to be leaders and follow the rules and follow the regulations. Something like this is already being done and prepared and being sent to the ministry anyways. So it's like an extra bit to put it on the, the website. It's a beginning piece that parents we could use to have parents look at. Maybe they're all stressed because of their numbers in their child's school, and then when they see this, they can understand more about how we have to balance things. If we have any follow-up at the board meeting, it's always going to be helpful. It's not to change, we know we can't change that. It's more the explanation that comes with it that becomes public and that helps ease parents' questions or answer their questions. I, I just think it's very straightforward and clear, and I'm happy to support it, and I thank trustee Kennedy for putting it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Up next is trustee Powell, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I am actually very curious, what law is being broken? Like, I don't understand, I, I, I'm sorry if, well, okay, how can we debate this? I don't believe a law is being broken, so tell me how it's being broken. Can we try that? Is that to be?
Trustee Powell, that's a question, that's a question.
All right.
So your, your debate time would be, you are not sure that, you are sure that the law is not being broken, and you're not, not going to support it or you're going to support it? That, that would be kind of, and you could provide your explanation for either way.
There you go, that. You will, you will answer that?
So trustees, yeah, so trustee Powell, you would like to restate what you said?
I would like to state exactly how you said that.
Okay.
We're wasting time.
Okay, sounds good, okay, thank you, trustee Powell. So your three minutes is up, right?
So wait, sorry.
You, you like to add anything else to your?
No, but I do want to know that trustee Kennedy is going to address that.
Yes, so trustee Kennedy gets three minutes to close debate, and he gets a chance to answer that.
Okay, because I am confused.
Okay, thank you. We shall now move on to trustee Johann Janada, three minutes for debate, trustee Johann Janada.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I will not support this, and this is why. I have no problem posting it, obviously, it's already posted. We have history on why it was posted and when it was posted. It was when people weren't at schools. So if our parents, guardians, et cetera, have questions about class sizes, they had no one to reach out for, so it needed to be on the website. But if we post something without context, which I think has already been discussed, I'm concerned about the negative ramifications to that and misunderstandings. So in that regard, I will not support that, and I do not believe as a report, I think that we have a good relationship and we can talk about class sizes when it happens in our areas. We can guide our parents and guardians to the schools as far as our proper protocol is, is considered. That's our role, is to guide our. Uh, that's our role is to guide our stakeholders, our parents, to the right people to answer those questions. So so I will not support it unfortunately, but those are my reasons why. And and I think when the Ministry of Education provides us with a guideline, it's not considered a law. It's it's a mandate that we must follow, but I I wouldn't consider that a law. But that's my opinion. Thank you.
Trust you, Ohonchenada. Uh, with that, I see no other trustees. Hands up. And trustee Kennedy, you get three minutes to close discussion. You have your time starts now.
Yeah, thank you. So just answer three, Mr. Chair, trustee Powell. So we we are mandated to report this. Um, it's on regulation, um, as stated in one thirty-two dash twelve. So just again, you know, by June thirtieth each school year, each board shall submit a report to the school year on its class size in secondary schools to the minister in a format acceptable to the minister. We have to do that. We're doing that anyway, I assume. We don't, that's operational. We don't see that. Um, a board shall by June thirtieth each school year make the report available to the public by having it copied at the head office or posted on the website. So it's really not an option. Um, you know, we we've had some discussion here about COVID. You know, there was a report due June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, students were in school. There was a report due October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, students were in school. There was a report due June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, students were in school. And of course, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So COVID was a while ago. And these things, the these reports had to be, had to be posted. Um, so I don't know if we use the term breaking the law, but we are mandated. It is in the regulation that we are to report the information. And I mean, just as far as the reports go, um, I believe, um, it may have been superintendent awful that sent out to the two reports. And I actually have a few questions, not for today, but when we discussed the the secondary report, I actually don't understand it. Um, it has semester one classes, semester two and credits. And I I I can understand the elementary one, but not the the secondary one. So, you know, it'd be good just to get some clarity on that. And that's why I want to open it up for discussion and the director and superintendent of staffing can. The report looks great. I just don't understand how the the averages work at secondary level. The elementary one looks easy to read. It's got the class sizes and we're totally on compliance, which is great, but I just have some questions. And I believe maybe some of our um stakeholders might have the same questions.
Thank you trustee Kennedy. And with that, I shall call the vote on the, can you put the motion up, please? So the motion is in front of us. Uh, it has been moved by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Saunders. I shall now call the vote. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Ohonchenada?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Saunders, in favor? Trustee Kelly?
Oppose.
Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee Deepu?
Opposed.
Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee and trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor, five opposed. Motion fails. Shall now move on to, our next order of business is staff reports. There are no staff reports tonight. Uh, we shall now move on to item eleven, which is information items. Director Klein, Director Klein, please present your report.
I don't think my camera, there it is. Thank you, Chair. And I'll share my screen. Okay, thank you very much. Very brief director's report. And I'll run through it fairly quickly. Sorry, it's not loading. It's not turning on. Hold on. Praise the Lord. Very brief, was brief. Now it's not as brief as it was going to be. Uh, very short and sweet. We have achieving, believing and belonging. And the first item is just a update on the Delph program that we have. Next is just recent ongoings and events and activities, particularly with regard to faith and then esports. Not that long ago, we had many students here in the C E C, uh, not far from my office, uh, who were working on what probably at least uh uh looked forward to events of this high school student's life. That's exams. And there were examinations and written oral examinations in November of a hundred and twenty students uh in grades eleven and twelve. And they were here at C E C and then some were done at the Country Heritage Park in Milton. And these are exams. Uh, we did a report earlier this year about the Delph program. The Delph program is something that many other, many boards have begun to uh uh adapt and adopt and utilize as it provides a a sort of a global standard of proficiency in the French language. And most importantly, the very important to uh those uh people in France who want to protect the the language as well. So you get a rating on that. And for instance, if students venture, want to work in other countries that are part of the Francophonie, uh, having some rating in that is very beneficial. And they'll get the results in the new year. Faith events abound, and Gillian and Lori were good enough to share some of them. There's just a few here that are highlighted. But again, nurturing of our faith is key to what we do here at the H C D S B. And many noteworthy ones, of course, bring in other partners, Council of Catholic Bishops, Institute for Catholic Education, and the uh Hallton Catholic Children's Foundation, to name just a few. Federal secondary chaplains completed their first semester school retreats with students. Hallton Alive activity to provide Christmas greetings and small gift boxes for those in long-term care and senior care facilities was promoted and picked up by schools. Staff joined the uh C C C B webinar with Dr. Catherine Clifford. Uh, oops, sorry, Dr. Catherine Clifford on Lumineum Gentium, which is a probably the essential document that came out of Vatican uh two in nineteen sixty-four. And she was uh also a person, a non uh cleric who was at the Synod in Rome recently. Chaplains tend to PD with Dr. Anne Jamison from the Institute for Catholic Education, focused on the Catholic graduate expectations that explores how to make students more conscious of these goals during their educational journey. Continued fostering practices and providing resources, sometimes electronics uh to support liturgical seasons. November, of course, is a month when we spend uh a lot of time thinking about those who have passed. And of course, we're heading, we're now at the start of the Advent season as well. Continue. We had, uh, in our high schools, chaplains worked with other staff in some cases to hold listening circles to support students struggling over the events in Israel Gaza. We had our critical care and chaplaincy response team presence in the form of prayer service and grief support to a school that was mourning the death of retired colleague. Highlight, Gillian want to highlight Corpus Christi. Shop department carved and decorated inspirational plaques for women who are victims of the sex trade in the Dominican Republic. And the art department painted inspirational quotes on wooden squares for a school in the Dominican Republic for children whose parents work at a local refuge site. And did we pay our bill? Esports. The older I get, I think that's my kind of sport. Last week, steam consultant and itinerants with the support from I T staff hosted a Rocket League tournament for both elementary and secondary H C D S B students. Fifty teams participated virtually, up from thirty-two last year with Saint Francis Xavier, Christ the King winning tier one tournament and Holy Trinity and Lumen Christi winning the tier two tournament.
Two quick player, questions? If you have any, please try and my ways. Thank you, Director. Wait, 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 wait. Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions for Director Klein? Saying none. Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. Lots happening in our schools and thank you for you and the staff for that. With that, we shall now move on to item eleven point two, equity audit and anti-black racism strategic plan. Director Klein, please present your report.
Thank you, Chair. This, in this evening's agenda package are two separate but related reports that are the culmination of many months of review and consultation by Koski Minsky Law Firm, an external consultant that was hired to undertake this work following two separate motions that were adopted at this board table. The first report is an equity audit that was requested through a board motion passed at the June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one board meeting. The second report, and that first one is equity audit. The second report is an anti-black racism strategic plan that was requested through a board motion passed at the November first, two thousand twenty-two board meeting. The equity audit identifies recommendations to dismantle systemic discrimination within our school board. The anti-black racism strategy report also identifies recommendations as well as a three-year strategy aimed at dismantling anti-black racism and achieving systems equity for black students and staff. The lead consultant from Koski Minsky, Arlene Huggins, is here with us tonight. So just heard confirmation to respond to trustee questions about the methodology, findings and oral recommendations that that firm has submitted in their reports. Before I turn it over to Arlene, I would like to acknowledge the importance of these two reports as they represent a significant step in our ongoing journey towards building safe and inclusive schools and workplaces. As a school board, we are committed to nurturing learning and work environments that are free from discrimination and harassment. Human rights and equity are guiding values for this school board. They're consistent with Catholic social teaching and the Ontario Human Rights Code. The Ministry of Education has established a framework to guide equity and inclusive education for Ontario school boards. The work of dismantling systemic racism in any institution is a complex endeavor, and we know we must be intentional in its continu- in continuously striving towards equity. We have taken a multi-pronged approach as a system that includes strategies such as professional development, policy review, data collection, inclusive curricula, and establishing mechanisms to respond to incidents of racism and discrimination whenever and wherever they occur. While we all know that there is still much work to be done, we're moving in the right direction, and certainly these two reports provide some very concrete next steps. The findings in these reports highlight systemic challenges, including anti-black racism within our school board. These findings are reinforced by the results of the recent student census and workforce census. Acknowledging these issues is the first step, the first step toward meaningful change. This board is grateful to the students, the staff, the parents, caregivers, community organizations and other members of the A C D S B community who shared their experiences and their insights. Their voices are instrumental in guiding our path forward, and the feedback is more than clear. The recommendations trustees outline in these reports are not just words on a page. They're a call to all of us to act. We are committed to implementing changes to create a more equitable and inclusive school system where every student and staff member is valued. Some recommendations have significant budgetary implications. Regardless, I think we will all agree that there's also a significant cost to not acting on recommendations. As a senior team, we're dedicated to finding sustainable solutions and strategies that are not just feasible but meaningful and will have impact. At this time, I will turn it over to Arlene Huggins, the lead consultant for Koski Minsky. She's been kind enough to be with us tonight. Welcome, Arlene. And who will provide an overview of the work she and her team conducted and then take any questions you as trustees might have. Again, welcome, Arlene, and I will silence my mic and and allow you to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. I know you've had a lengthy deliberation already, so I will try to be succinct and leave most of the time for your questions. As John has indicated, the work that we were charged to do, both in respect to the anti-black racism strategic plan report and the equity audit, um, was was geared to achieving a systems equity for for all students and staff and to dismantle systemic and other forms of racism. In particular, one of the reports, as you know, is is um targeted and directed towards um black identifying students and staff and anti-black racism. Prior to being engaged, and and I'm going to deal with the A B R, uh, anti-black racism report first and and the equity audit, uh, report, uh, secondly. Prior to being engaged to undertake this work, we understand that the the board was presented with a variety of concerns uh by black parents, uh, Black Teachers Association and other stakeholder groups. So the purpose of the work we were engaged to do was to determine the breadth of the concerns, uh, whether they were widespread across uh black parents, teachers and black community, and and what um the board could do to address them. So to that end, I'm just going to outline to you a bit of the methodology, the details of which are contained contained in the anti-black racism report that I understand has been um provided to the trustees and is now on the on the website for the board as a whole. We started with a number of different approaches. The the reasoning being the part of the investigation was what were the concerns? And and whether they were of any um thematic theme being, were they isolated concerns? Were they concerns that did not impact um a majority of of the constituency? Or whether there was some commonality among the concerns raised? And to that end, we did widespread consultations and individual interviews, both consultations with stakeholder groups, uh, individual interviews and um uh consultations with individual interviews, and consultations with parents and staff. A number of the consultations, three were held in the community, widespread advertising to parents, students within the school, within the board, and they were held at two schools within the Halton Catholic District Community and one online for those who couldn't attend in person. As well as I stated, there were individual interviews. And at the end of that and the report details, the various feedback that we received from various communities and various stakeholder groups. And I think the key, without going into all the detail, and I'll give you a highlight, I'll touch on a highlight of some of the themes. But the key finding was the consistency, the consistency in what we heard across stakeholder groups. I think that's important because what it meant was this wasn't just hearing from students, it wasn't just hearing from parents, it wasn't just hearing from staff. It was hearing from a number of different constituencies about the experiences that they had either experienced themselves or observed within the board. And that includes the experiences of students and the experiences of black staff. And so we touched on issues of not just student engagement, not just parent-community engagement, not just academic achievements and challenges in that regard, not just issues of discrimination, both systemic and direct discrimination, individual experiences of the parents and students that we spoke to, but also systemic issues concerning representation, representation of staff, career, promotion, a variety of different issues of both the staff and the students within the board that led to the recommendations that we made. Part of the things that we did in addition to the consultation and interviews was, of course, looking at your workforce and student census, the first of which that you've engaged in that was conducted in two thousand twenty-two but not released until March, late March of two thousand twenty-three. But we also looked at the census information from other boards, those readily available, obviously, publicly available. We also undertook an extensive policy review, not just policies, your policies, and that's how we crossed over between the ABR report and the Equity Report. We reviewed all of approximately two hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-five board policies related to equity, diversity, or systems in that regard, and procedures to address equity, anti-black racism, equity generally, discrimination, harassment, and the like. But we also did a policy review of other boards, again, what we could find from a public perspective, and looked at other external organizations stakeholders to inform what we did. And we include in the report a comparator of school boards and stakeholder research, which we engaged in as well that analyzed anti-black racism strategies, and as well looked at other strategic plans, other programs to combat anti-black racism. There are thirteen boards that we located across Ontario that have an anti-black racism strategic plan or programs similar to that. And we looked at what was available in that regard. Lastly, we did research on, sorry, first, a literature review. We did a literature review of best practices in various organizations, but in particular, school boards and public organizations on education, the education as a whole, and anti-black racism across, so not just about Halton Catholic, but across the province and educational research across the province in that regard. We looked at resources. One of the comments John made is about resources, so we looked at resources. What does the board have? And with regard to what we saw might be needed in terms of engaging in the recommendations that we have provided to you. And I did summarize, they are included in the full report, but we summarized them in a recommendations report for ease of reference as well for the staff. And lastly, we looked at an anti-black racism steering committee, and that came from the trustees. That was something the trustees had raised as, maybe not the name of it, but some sort of potential steering committee that could sort of direct the work. And so we engaged in quite a bit of research about equity steering committees in other school boards and organizations that were similar with a view to proposing pretty specific recommendations on what an anti-black racism steering committee would look like in terms of mandate governance, composition, authority, and the like, and that's attached in the report, as well as preparing bylaws that we thought might assist the board in engaging in that committee. So all of that is summarized, all of the background work is summarized in the report. It was extensive for us to be able to give a fulsome sense of recommendations that we thought were important. And a number of those recommendations, as you can see, involve data collection. And one of the things that we realized when we engaged in this work, not only in respect to Halton Catholic, but other school boards, is the lack of data. Data collection is one of the most challenging issues, not only facing school boards such as yours, but facing other organizations who are doing this work. I do this work not only for school boards, but for other public organizations who are doing similar, have similar intentions in terms of making their workplaces more equitable, and in particular, dealing with issues of anti-black racism. And data collection is something that is a challenge across the board, okay? So a lot of the recommendations we've talked about in the report deal with data collection. Data collection in terms of not just information as to who is being impacted, but complaints, processes, investigation processes, discipline. There's a number of related issues through the report that we've addressed. Switching to the Equity Audit briefly in terms of its methodology, one of the things we were able to do was to, although they're two separate reports, we were able to use some of the information collected from the Anti-Black Racism Consultations and Report in terms of the Equity Report. Of course, the Equity Audit takes into account all of the equity communities within the board, not just the black community. We looked at LGBTQ two-spirited plus community. We looked at gender, we looked at disabilities, we looked at other equitable diverse groups, and looked at issues such as both staff and students again. For students, in terms of accessibility, discrimination, harassment, incidence of discipline, complaints, discipline being disparate, discipline experienced by disparate groups, complaints, accountability, reporting, as well training of staff, promotion and career opportunities for diverse staff, hiring, training again, and other issues. So that was a broader perspective than the ABR, but we're able to use some of the information from the ABR, of course, to inform that work. As I indicated earlier, we looked at two hundred and thirty-five board policies in respect of equity and to inform the audit. And the audit is meant to be a starting point. It's a point of reference. From that point, and based on the recommendations we've made, you'll be able to build from the audit. So audit is undertaken, whatever number of years you decide to conduct an audit, to refresh, to take an opportunity to look at where you are and use that as a jumping point for where you are in a period of time from that point. Obviously, part of that work is looking at the demographics of the student and workforce population. And I want to say one thing about that before I move on to the findings. The key points in respect to this work are twofold. Number one, there's a morality issue. What you want as a board and every organization wants to ensure that all students and staff are experiencing the educational environment in a similar way, right? You want to achieve systems equity for all students, and that's a core reason why this work was undertaken. But the other reason why is a recognition, the demographics of the province of Ontario is changing. The student demographics are changing. And as they change, as they become more diverse, then your students are going to become more diverse, and your potential students are more diverse. Your parents are more diverse. So it has become not only within the school boards, but other organizations, a imperative in terms of, these are your future constituencies. These are the constituencies you need to attract, to grow. And that is the primary reason why I get hired for various organizations. A recognition that the community in which they're engaged in is changing, and they need to address those changes within their organization and be prepared for those changes. And to adopt in a way that takes those changes into account. Let me briefly talk about the ABR findings. John has touched on a few of them, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. They are outlined in both the ABR and Equity Audit Reports. But there are some common themes, and I'll just go list those for a bit before I look at the recommendations briefly. There are harmful stereotypes and perceptions that both staff and students self-identifying as black are experiencing. And that, you know, the perception is reality is very germane in terms of the consultations we conducted. There was a significant sense of lack of representation, and there are twofold supports for that, not just the experience of individuals, teachers working within the system who are not seeing teachers that look like them, students who are in the system who are not seeing other students who look like them. But the workforce census and the student census place that out, right? The demographics that you've collected for yourself support the observations of the stakeholders that we addressed. I won't go into the statistics, they're in the report. However, there is a key point that I think I want to emphasize. While the representation of the black students and staff is low, you are one of the highest in terms of the number of black students we could find. Again, a lot of schools have not done their censuses yet. They're in the midst of doing census data or updating census data. Some are doing them, as this board is, for the first time and not published reports yet. But from the students that we, from the data that we could find, eight point seven percent of elementary students within your board and seven point five percent of secondary students within your board self-identify as black, and that was one of the highest we found in the boards we looked at, which are the boards within the GTA and environment. And we actually did look, you know, wider than the GTA, obviously, Halton, Hamilton, Wentworth, York Region, and a number of other boards. You were one of the highest, which suggests that this is important work for your board or should be. The recommendations, sorry, going back to the themes. Accountability and trust from parents and stakeholders was a big issue. There was a sense and a feeling consistently from the stakeholders' parents that we spoke to, that there was a feeling that there had been a lack of accountability, and therefore, there's a trust issue within your board that has to be addressed. Lack of accountability, lack of transparency were themes that we heard of across the board. Lack of academic support and guidance for black students, black affinity groups, support groups. Students, black students are feeling isolated. And black parents are feeling isolated because there was no way for them to communicate together. And in fact, one of the things that came out of the consultation was the surprisingly amount of support that was felt by the parents collectively in the room just to speak to each other. That was an important thing because they felt that they had not had that opportunity in the past. And then we had issues of concerns about training and sufficiency of training materials, black-related education materials, and also disproportionate, what was believed to be disproportionate. And I sense, and I emphasize the belief of disproportionality because the one thing we don't have is the data to show whether or not that perception is true. Certainly, there were various parents who had expressed their own experiences with discriminatory discipline. But in order to get a picture as to whether this was an across-the-board issue on a real-life basis and how extensive, the data is not there. And so data is important not only to show that something is there, but also to show if something's not there. If the perception doesn't match the reality, your data will show that. So I think that's also an important reason for data. And then lastly, we looked at resources, as I stated, because there was a perception that there was not sufficient resources being put forward to address these issues. On the Equity Report side, the findings were more about the policies. There were specific policies that we had seen that some gaps, things that we thought needed to be addressed and buttressed, were introduced, and we made those recommendations. But part of the Equity Interviews, the information from those Equity Interviews were very consistent with in terms of the black constituency, those mirrored. in in terms of the Black constituency, those mirrored the the stakeholder groups that we did meet with with the ABR report in terms of the other constituencies, the LGBTQ, Two-Spirited Communities, and those within the board that work with those communities, accessibility, gender. Those were also voices we heard and recommendations we made address some of those as well. I'm not going to take up too much more time, as I say. I'm just gonna touch on the scope of the recommendations rather than go into the details of them. There are recommendations in the Equity Report in terms of the specific policies and specific amendments that we are suggesting or or additions we're suggesting that are self-explanatory. And then when you go over to the Equity Report, there are other systems, hiring, recruitment type, career promotion, staff, and other training for staff that we deal with in the Equity Report as well to address the information we got from the Equity Audit. When you go over to the ABR, there are seventeen recommendations we've made in respect to the report addressing, again, policies and procedures, and that pulls from the Equity Audit. And then also talking about data collection, as we've talked about, complaint reporting, complaint investigation, increasing representation of of staff and administrators, recruitment, inclusive recruitment and hiring practices, mentorship and inclusive mentorship and leadership development, anti-Black racism and curriculum training, trauma-informed services and restoration. We heard a lot from the parents about trauma and their children being exposed to trauma, traumatic comments, traumatic treatment, and and a gap in terms of how how that trauma is being addressed. The Afrocentric pedagogy was also something we heard about and we talked about in the recommendations as well as Black Student and Staff Report. We also have a section of recommendations in respect to the Human Rights and Equity Office and have recommended two additional staff members in that in that office. One to address the ABR Strategic Plan and Recommendations as well as to direct the work of the ABR Steering Committee and support administrators, students, parents, volunteers, stakeholders dealing with the day-to-day complaints and investigations in respect to anti-Black racism complaints. Between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-three, I believe there were two hundred and eighty-eight student complaints under the hate and bias incident reporting policy, fifty-three percent of which were race or color-related. And then in respect to the staff complaints under the Workplace Investigation Policy, I believe I have my statistics properly. There were, like, there was eighty eighty complaints there. So there are complaints being made. There there's, and some administrators are having a difficult time navigating them because of, you know, the well-minded, maybe, but may not have the training and the expertise to navigate addressing these issues. And the resource, an extra resource person, the Human Rights and Equity Office, would be able to help that along. The other individual we've recommended is someone who will be responsible for the monitoring, tracking, collating, analyzing of human rights data, not just the anti-Black racism data, but the Equity Data Collection that we've recommended across the board. And outcomes originating from research, curriculum services, and safe schools. And so those are the the two resources that we've recommended. The 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 one, the first research, resource we recommended is outward-facing, not system-facing, but outward-facing. Their work would be to deal with the community and the engagement with the community and the, including the Anti-Black Racism Steering Committee, and assisting your staff to deal with the parents and students arising out of complaints. And then the last recommendation is the Anti-Black Steering Committee that I've already referred to. I'm gonna stop there, as I know that there may be questions, and I wanted to give an opportunity. And I'm happy to touch on something, anything that I I didn't touch on that that is that anyone has questions about.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Really appreciate your presentation. And with this, I shall now, Director Klein, you want to add anything else? So I should open the floor to trustees for questions?
No, I don't have anything else to add. Thank you very much, Arlene, for this. And yeah, we'll we'll hop over to the trustees.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, at this point in time, I shall now open up the floor for questions. Please put your hand up and I shall ask you to speak. First up, we have trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the for your presentation. It's it's hard to to read through this whole thing, and I was I have some questions. I have many, but I will just focus on a few right now. And then I'll go back into the into the queue. I guess with the consultation, there was a section about trustees. And I was wondering how you reached out to trustees. It seems you had conversations with some and not others. I particularly wasn't asked or wasn't aware that trustees were being interviewed through through this report. So I'm just wondering what your method was and how you chose which trustees to reach out to or hear from. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Ms. Huggins.
I'm happy to answer that. We did not include trustees as a stakeholder group, per se, in the in the the work we were doing. It is in the context of speaking to some of the groups that we identified, stakeholder, teachers, parents, that specifically referenced someone, whether it be a trustee or another teacher or another stakeholder group that wished, that that they thought may want to talk to us. And that's how that was done. I will say this, that the trustee feedback, although it's present because it was someone we we spoke to, there was nothing in the trustee feedback that wasn't already supported in terms of the feedback from the other constituencies. So we we included the the trustees that we did speak to. But the but the feedback or the information from those trustees is is mirrors the information in the other constituencies. So you you could take out the trustee feedback altogether from the report, and the recommendations, the findings would be the same.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Your follow-up question?
Let's see. My follow-up question would be, well, just in reference to one line here on page seventy-six of our board package, so forty-six of the report, says two trustees interviewed advised that, historically speaking, HR has not been intentional with their hiring. So I do have the impression that trustees were reached out and interviewed.
Ms. Huggins?
As I said, trustees as a as a group were not were not the constituency that was intended to be interviewed. There may have been someone who had indicated that some individual had information and asked us to reach out or recommended we reach out to that individual.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Ohern, so trustees, if you have more questions, you can always add your name down to the speakers list, and I'll come back to you. Trustee Ohern, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Huggins, good evening. Thank you for that report. I actually read it three days in a row because I I couldn't digest it in in one sitting, and I and I still don't think I have it all. But I'm looking at it at a higher level, and and really, you know, nobody wants to hear negative, but those are things we have to hear so that we can be better, right? You go to the doctor and and you don't want the doctor to say everything's fine, and you walk out of there and you've got an ailment. So so I appreciate the efforts that our entire board has put through on this report. I am really looking forward to Director Klein, you and your staff taking all those recommendations, prioritizing them, so we can start putting action behind this report that will hopefully help with the trust of our board, that we will put action behind our report. So so thank you to everyone involved. I truly appreciate it.
Just to to be clear, this is not unique to this board. I do this work across different boards. This is not unique to this board. Some of the comments, as trustee O'Hearn has said, may be hard to hear. You're not the only one hearing it. And and I think it's important to recognize, you're not in isolation. But it is it is being communicated as a way to move forward, not to look back, but to move forward.
And and thank you for that. Just to just to follow up to that, is there were some, you know, positives that we've actually had the report, you know, done and completed, that we're starting to move forward, as you say, Ms. Huggins. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee. Up next is trustee Kelly. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and just to echo the statements of trustee O'Hearn, I just want to give thanks to all of the work that's been done. It's really amazing what, like, work has been shown in this draft in general and that it was many months-long process. And it's just amazing to acknowledge the bravery and patience it took to discuss, like, these traumatic and discriminatory experiences and ensure, I mean, that systemic discrimination is addressed and making sure that we're being equitable and uplifting all those voices of underrepresented and equity-seeking groups. So my question, I guess, is in regards to what exactly is the timeline that we're looking at for these recommendations to be put in place in our school board? Because, you know, discrimination is going to continue to be happening, and I I just think that it should be emphasized and prioritized.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. I'm going to pass this to Director Klein. Director Klein?
Okay, thank you very much, trustee Kelly. I get a sense of what your thought of the timeline, what it would be. Probably pretty quick, and I think we would all want to move forward as quickly as possible. In discussion with staff, obviously, there's key staff that we discussed this with, we'd be looking to come back to this board with a more detailed report about the plan as it as it would be executed in March, if not sooner.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Follow-up? No, thank you. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to be repetitive, but as well, I read the report several times, and it was hard to read and not for the reason that it was a lengthy report. That wasn't at all why it was difficult, but it it's obviously difficult to read the comments and the experiences of people who shared and some of the research, some of the information that was provided in that report. But myself, along with some of the other comments that have come from trustees this evening, I'm excited is not the right word, but I am. I'm excited that we have this report to build from. I am looking forward to what comes next. I think that there is much for us to be proud of in that we have taken this step and that we are are we are taking these next steps to do what we need to do in order to implement some of these suggestions and review these recommendations. And I applaud everybody for their work in bringing this together. And while, yes, there was difficult things in there to read, and while there were hard things to digest, I do think it gives us a really great jumping off point, and I still think we have a lot to be proud of, and I think that there's a lot more work that we can do to make things even better for our schools, our students, and our staff. So thank you to everybody who did this work, and I really do look forward to what comes next for some of those next steps. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Up next is trustee Carabella. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a question about the data and or the information you've collected. In the past, when our board receives information like this, we do have access to the raw data or the, you know, all the all the information. Is that something that can be provided or available for the surveys you've done and the consultations and stakeholder feedback?
Just, just, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, when we get information reports, trustee Carabella, you'd like to clarify your question, because we get information reports all the time from staff, and generally, information report is the package that we get, and that's about it. So are you looking for something specific or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, sometimes we get the the actual information, like we get from the Communications Department or Research Department. We 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 are more like the the full report. So there were certain areas that we we saw, but not everything. So that's why I'm just wondering if there's.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Ms. Huggins, you want to?
You have the full report. The 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 report was not edited in any way. The full report that we prepared for the board is what the trustees have. In terms of the consultations, we had provided a more detailed consultation, brief, if I could call it that way. But it's it's very much summarized in the report itself. We tried not to take out, in fact, to the contrary, the reason why the report is so lengthy is because we included basically everything everyone told us in order so that you could see the information. The other thing that's key and critical is, one, we did the consultations, one, we did the interviews. We did indicate to those people who spoke to us, recognizing that they shared very sensitive and traumatic experiences with us, that they would not be identified by name. And that is something we had to commit to, and that is something that was required to be committed to by the parents, stakeholders, and others that we interviewed because of the the sensitivity of their experiences. So other than the names of the individuals we spoke to, you have all the information in the report that was told to us.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have follow-up?
A follow-up would be, I I realize that that was very sensitive, and in cases of some of the trustee comments, being here for many years, I I have recollection of who that would be. And I'm wondering if you were also asking a consent to the people who gave you their very sensitive stories, that it was going to be made public now at the the board meeting?
We we made sure that everyone knew that information we were collecting was for the purposes of us preparing our port for the board for this purpose, for the anti-Black racism work that we were engaged in.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Huggins. I shall go down to the next speaker and come back to you, trustee Carabella, if you have questions. Trustee Kennedy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering if any superintendents were interviewed as well regarding any input into the report?
Ms. Huggins?
Not names, just if we just interviewed at all.
Okay, let me just check with Ms. Huggins's question here. Any superintendents were interviewed for the purpose?
We interviewed some administrators at different levels, at different levels. So I can.
Yeah. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
Sorry, administrators, is that principals?
Administrators, principals, vice principals.
So not superintendent?
Could be, could be consultants, director.
Could be any, any, from our definition, administrators are everyone other than trustees.
Okay. Trustee Kennedy, you follow?
I just had a question. I noticed in some comments, I know you mentioned the trustees' comments maybe not be that relevant, but I did find some comments, you know, one trustee said, one trustee felt, that was about twenty-two times, and another trustee, six. but I did find some comments, you know, one trustee said, one trustee felt, that was about twenty-two times and another trustee, six times. Were those only two trustees that had those, like, the comments? Or was it, well, there would be at least two because it said another trustee. Do you know how many trustees gave input into those twenty-eight comments?
I I do not. I don't have that information. I don't have that information here and so I couldn't, I couldn't tell you.
Trustee Kennedy, I think what I heard from Ms. Huggins is that the section about trustees can be taken out from the report. Am I correct, Ms. Huggins?
You're correct. That the information of the trustees, and that's why I made clear that trustees' information, although it's there because we wanted to be transparent in terms of we did speak to to some, the information that they provided is consistent with the other constituencies. So if you remove them, the information in the report is still the same.
Thank you. I see no other trustees. Okay, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. You're the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask something about on page seventy-five of our board package, so page forty-five of the report. It says here that the C E C building itself does not have an accessible washroom. And I'm not understanding that statement as we do have a washroom here in this building that's accessible, I thought. So can I get clarity on that?
Thank you. I'll go to Ms. Huggins and then I can go to Superintendent Merrick. First, Ms. Huggins, because the report is written by you.
I think the, this was a report, this was the feedback that we got from from one of the participants that you're referring to on page forty-five. And again, I'm not sure we're on the same page forty-five. Are you talking about page forty-five, which report?
Oh, I see. Well, I have it as page seventy-five of the equity audit.
Okay, so page seventy-five, the equity audit, I believe that section based on information that was 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 reported. So one of the things we made clear in the both reports is to differentiate between information that we obtained in our research and the consultations. The consultations are based on what people told us. And we made clear in both reports, what people told us was based on the information, their perceptions. We were not verifying what people told us. So if someone told us they had experienced X or Y, we have no way of independently corroborating that. So I think that's key and that's the caution we we give in the report.
Trustee Carabella, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, because I was sort of wondering that because very much it's stories or incidences and then you wonder like, well, were these followed up? Is it factual evidence, you know, like, because some of them are distressing, so you'd want to make sure they were followed up. So those sort of things, I was just not feeling everything could be foot.
Let me comment on that. One of the things that we're looking at when we do this work is how are your constituencies feeling? What are they experiencing? Anti-black racism and the experience of these students are very individualized. When I talked about earlier perception as reality, they're talking to you about their experiences. There's no fact check in that sense. They're talking about their children. You've heard the stories, their children being called the N world or their children feeling isolated. They're the they're the only ones in their class that are being isolated. Is that a something you can fact check? You can't fact check it insofar as that's how they've experienced their educational environment. And the work here and the recommendations are to address this. What what I indicated and what I I think we have to make clear is how you fact check, if you want to fact check, if that's the word, if it's not the right word, but if 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 that's what is by looking at the consistency of experiences. This is not one person. This is not two person. We had consultations across the board. We had rooms of forty people. The experiences were the same. The stories in our interviews while we were being told are the same. So it's not a matter of fact checking one person's experience or second person's. That's beyond our capabilities. But what we look at when we do this work is the consistency of the information we're receiving. And that that's what is presented in the reports.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, you have another question?
Okay, thank you. I would ask, I'm not sure which page is on because I was also being here for, it was the discussion about the liaison officer at our at our school board. And I think there was a statement that there was no discussion. But we had, I was going to ask whether you you did view the board meetings for that and to see that in that there was in fact a lot of discussion about that. But perhaps that's what I'm going to ask then. Were you like going to follow up on that?
No, trustee Carabella, I think we heard, just heard the answer to your question. These are statements made by 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 people who were interviewed and they were not cross-checked and fact-checked. So the answer to your question is the same as Ms. Huggins gave it to you earlier. All right? Am I correct, Ms. Huggins?
You are correct, Chair.
Thank you. So I see no other hands up here. So I want to thank you, Ms. Huggins, for your presentation and the work that you and your team have undertaken. Addressing systemic racism is a collective responsibility and one that we take very seriously. We are one of the very few school boards across the province who have taken initiatives to implement an equity audit. And we are dedicated to continuing, to continuous learning and adapting our strategies to ensure we are always moving forward in equity and justice. We now turn these reports and recommendations over to the director and our senior team and will fully support them as they undertake this important work. As a board of trustees, we hold ourselves accountable to our stakeholders for progress and transparency in our efforts. And we will ensure our community is kept informed about the progress of this work, always keeping the focus on justice for our students and our staff. And with that, I want to thank you, Director Klein, and I want to thank you, thanks, Senior Manager Jay Rahman and your team for having this task completed. Thank you, Ms. Huggins, for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, trustees, we shall move on to item number twelve, miscellaneous information. Twelve point one, student trustee updates. Student trustees, please present your update. I believe it's going to be a verbal update. Student trustee Chua, who's presenting? Trustee Deepu, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. For student trustees' update, I will be taking over the achieving section of our document. Firstly, the academic success of our students is one of the main goals of this school board. So this past month, various schools across the board have done their part in celebrating and promoting student achievement in schools by hosting their annual academic awards ceremony. And students were awarded for their honorable place in subject achievement, community service, math contests and more. On behalf of us student trustees and the student senate, we would like to congratulate all our student award recipients and all our students for their continued efforts in striving to achieve. And we would also like to thank all our schools for hosting those ceremonies that really help our students to feel appreciated for their achievements. Furthermore, a few weeks ago, we held our student senate November general senate meeting at Assumption Catholic Secondary School. And as always, this meeting was filled with meaningful discussions. We had a presentation for from Superintendent Cordero. We discussed, which will be discussed later in the believing section. And we also had two successful proposals by our student leadership and achievement subcommittee. So basically, these proposals entail the possible creation of peer tutoring programs in schools that do not have them already, as well as the increased availability and promotion of post-secondary resources for grade twelve students looking to apply in the U S in the future. So these two are really oriented to our student achievement and we're glad to have those resources for our students. And in the next few weeks, the subcommittee will be contacting school guidance departments to support them in possible possibly implementing these plans in order to create the best possible school environment for students to achieve these, achieve academic success.
And I will be taking on the believing section. So at our November student senate meeting at Assumption Catholic Secondary School, the student senate began to plan our submission entry for the OCSTA video contest. Throughout our video this year, we want to highlight the amazing work that our Halden Catholic Secondary Schools are accomplishing through the lens of our student leaders across our board. And furthermore, the Faith in Action Student Senate Subcommittee is creating a proposal for the student senate regarding their Saint social media series. This will help educate our students all over social media about the importance and significance of our Catholic saints, highlighting their accomplishments and what they have done for our communities and our Catholic faith. Subsequently, the Christmas season is very quickly approaching. All of our Halden Catholic Secondary Schools are facilitating charity donation drives to help those in need this Christmas season. St. Francis Xavier is currently running their Warm for Winter Coat Drive campaign with the goal of reaching two hundred and fifty coat donations for Cooperatives Milton to donate to local families and children in need. If they are able to reach this goal, then Cooperatives Milton has pledged to give back to the school and will be providing a thousand dollar leadership scholarship to graduating student to help find the, fund the post-secondary education. Holy Trinity is starting a Christmas drive for students where students are encouraged to bring non-perishable food items, feminine hygiene products and winter gear, which will be donated to various places across the Oakville region such as Care Street Mansion, Shiva Homes and the Women's Center of Halden. Bishop Breding is running the Royal Christmas Candy Drive where students will donate through school cash online to support families in need. Corpus Christi is participating in Angel Tree Initiative where each class can raise a minimum of seventy-five dollars and buys a gift card for a family in need this season. These charity drive initiatives highlighted are just a few of many going on in our secondary and elementary schools. And it's amazing to see that our students across the H T D S B are giving back to those in need this holiday season. Finally, there have been many concerns from teachers and students across our secondary schools about the lack of funding due to families not paying their student activity fee, which is a constant pressing issue that I know our principals face day to day. This fee, although optional, but very necessary, directly impacts extracurriculars and experiential learning that we'll be, that we are able to provide our students. But due to the lack of payments within our schools, many of our departments were forced to cancel retreats and their field trips. Religion departments especially across our schools have been victim to this as many of them were forced to cancel their retreats and field trips to religious sites within the Halden region and the GTA.
And I will be taking on the belonging section. So the commemoration of anti-bullying awareness week and the International Day of People with Disabilities has sparked much learning and conversation on how we can make our board a better place. So through our Anti-Bullying Week, schools at the H T D S B have welcomed speakers that have been able to talk to students about the importance of anti-bullying. So for example, author Lena Button came to speak to students at St. Timothy Catholic Elementary School in Burlington. And she talked about the importance of kindness, which was an important and impactful visit. The H T D S B student senate, as mentioned earlier in the achieving section, also received a presentation update, was an update on the Bullying Intervention Plan and Reporting Tool for Superintendent Cordero at our last meeting at November twenty-second at Assumption Catholic Secondary School. The senate was able to engage in an active and engaging discussion surrounding anti-bullying and bullying prevention. And we are grateful for Superintendent Cordero's time and insights. Since the International Day of People with Disabilities was commemorated last week, schools have taken the time to recognize the important contributions of neurodivergent and disabled individuals to our schools and recommend all these efforts, especially to those experts who put together a lot of these resources for us to learn. Many secondary schools are also continuing to ensure that grade nines are supported. So for example, at Signatius of Loyola Catholic Secondary School, their mentor program, which is a grade nine mentorship program with, where they're paired with older students, has implemented a Nest Parent Initiative, which assigns a staff member to a certain group of grade nines and mentors. This sends, they will then facilitate monthly meetings with these students to discuss topics like mental health and their transition to high school, which is a wonderful way to ensure that our grade nine students are supported in this huge transition. So our, the pillar of belonging is being fulfilled in many ways within our schools and we are grateful for all the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustees, for your report. Trustees, do we have any questions for our student trustees? Seeing none. I want to thank you for your report and thank you for bringing your student voice once again to the table. And with that, we shall move on to to item number thirteen, correspondences. We do not have any open question period, number fourteen. Director Klein, do we have any questions submitted for the open question period?
No, we did not, Chair.
Thank you, Director Klein. Moving on, item number fifteen in camera, we do not have to go in camera. And we finally move on to item number sixteen, resolution regarding absentees. We have all trustees present today, so we shall skip this. And our last order of business is adjournment and closing prayer. May I now have a motion to adjourn? Looking for a mover, please? Nobody wants to adjourn? Trustee Paul? Looking for a seconder? Trustee Kelly? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We have adjourned. Vice Chair Agnew, please lead us in the closing prayer.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, in the name of the Father, of the Son and the Holy Spirit. Bless us, oh Lord, as we leave here today, to take your passion with us, fan its flame after we part and inspire our best contributions. Remind us always of your love as we see our plans unfold and accomplish the goals that we set here today. In the name of Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, and thanks, everybody, for a great meeting. Good night.